Together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committing to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. The meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the community at large. So we will start with an introduction of the board, starting from my right.
Lloyd Culberson, 4th Ward.
Richard Kristoff, 4th Ward.
Sam Ziccarelli, 3rd Ward.
Stuart Dixon, 2nd Ward.
Jay Kennedy, 4th Ward.
Rich Foster, 2nd Ward.
And Bob Frankson from the 1st Ward. And with us from city staff this evening is Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development, and Megan Newman, City Planner. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We'll start with the January 27th, 2014 minutes. Any comments to those minutes?
I move we accept the minutes from the January 27th meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? January 27th minutes are approved. Moving on to the March 31st meeting minutes. Any comments to those? Bearing none, motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 31st, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Those minutes are approved. So the first petition this evening is a consideration of a request for approval of a variance for an addition in the side yard setback at 773 Highview Terrace. The owners are Ryan and Kim Taylor, and representative is Peter Whitmer, architect. Anybody intending to testify in this matter, if you stand, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. We'll move on to presentation by the petitioner, Mr. Whitmer.
Thank you. I'm Peter Whitmer from Whitmer &amp; Associates. I'm presenting the project at 773 Highview Terrace. And what we're asking for is a side yard setback variation. It's in the Highview Terrace subdivision, which is subdivided in the 20s. The lots are, do not conform to the existing R1 zoning, which is a 75-foot lot. All the lots in the subdivision are relatively consistent, a little over 50 feet wide. There are a few wider lots in there. And most of the houses are, were built in the 50s between the, actually, I think, most of them were done around in the 50s. And if you look in the neighborhood, a lot of side yard setbacks, it must have been around seven feet at the time because it seems relatively consistent. The existing house here, this shows on the left-hand side, the existing house, so it has a driveway that comes into a garage in the back, a front walk, and the existing side yard is, I think, 7.23 feet. There's an existing screened-in porch to the south that we're planning on taking down and then putting on an addition that goes really across the whole back. The proposed site plan to the right, the shaded area just indicates the existing footprint of the house, and then you can see the addition that we're adding on to the back. The house is relatively modest in terms of scale. We're not really going to change anything from the front elevation. From the side, it does get slightly longer, but we're really adding this chunk of living space here. And really what it does, it turns it into a four-bedroom house that's pretty modest in scale. We did do a scheme that conformed to the setback, to the 10-foot yard setback. While it seems like a minor variance that we're asking for, when you take three feet out of it, you look at the floor plans, this is the first floor plan, there's a second floor plan. If you take three feet out of it downstairs, it really makes it very difficult to get a dining space and a living space and a kitchen together. In the second floor, it makes it, you know, a 12-foot wide bedroom, a nine-foot wide bedroom, again, which is really, I think, a difficult thing to do. The roof plan is pretty straightforward. We're really trying to work with the existing massings. And I can show you the elevations here. This is the existing house. This is the front of the house, which wouldn't have any changes. This would be the east elevation, which has this double gable that we're creating. This is the addition piece that we're adding on to it. The materials will all be the same. And then the rear elevation, this is the west side, which again has this double gable. It'll have a small side entrance here. And then the rear elevation, which will have a patio in the lower part and then a dormer that goes out the back. I think that's pretty much my presentation. I can turn it back over for any questions. Thank you. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to staff's report. Ms. Newman.
Thank you, Chairman Frankson. This lot is located in a smaller lot neighborhood. As was noted by the petitioner, the homes are consistently developed on the lot with respect to the side yard setbacks and the front yard setbacks. This project, while it's a larger addition to the rear of the home, only a small portion of the project encroaches into the side yard setback area. It's about a three- or four-foot encroachment into the setback area. There is an existing one-story addition that is in the location of the proposed addition. So in terms of impact between what's there and what's proposed, there's minimal change proposed. The second floor space that's proposed is pulled outside of the setback area, so that does comply with the zoning requirements for this lot in the R1 district. There are positive findings in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but this does seem to be a straightforward request, given the development in the area and the proposed project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I might start with just a couple. The rear and side yards, side lot setback requirements are currently what? That dotted line shows the setback, correct? And the required amount of square feet on each side?
The side yards are 10-foot. I believe the rear yard's 35 feet. And I think the front yard is, is the front yard 35 feet or 40 feet? 40 feet, yeah. And that's what's indicated by this dashed line.
Yeah.
This dashed line indicates detached structure, just to show how the garage could move back if they wanted to.
Sure. Okay.
Any questions from the board, starting in the sent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple. Peter, there's a tree on the southeast corner of the house, if I'm not mistaken. It's not a huge tree, but it's maybe 15, 18 inches in diameter. And it's just off the screened-in porch now. Are you familiar with the tree?
Yeah, it has to be, it will have to be removed.
It will be removed. Okay. And staff is okay with that?
As part of the permitting process, they will be required to provide a landscape plan showing inch-to-inch replacement for that tree.
Okay. And then the only other thing I'd observe is that the addition is going to be taller than the existing porch, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's going to extend all the way to the southwest corner of the house. Is that correct?
Southwest. It actually, the roof, the main peak comes down, and then the dormer is set back.
Okay, but at the ground level, it's going to be an extension of, I hope I have my directions right, of the west wall, right?
The west wall, correct.
It'll be a south, the west wall will extend south by the width of the porch, which is on your drawing at 13.58 feet, plus an additional two-and-a-half feet, correct?
This is the existing porch.
Right.
All right.
Go to your.
This is the addition.
Right, and it goes all the way to the left, go to the left, right there.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
All right, so that's approximately 16 feet.
From the property line on that side, correct?
16 feet from the back of the existing corner of the house, right?
Correct, yeah.
So it, I just observed this, but it looks like it's going to make that driveway even tougher to negotiate, and it's going to be kind of tight squeeze.
Yeah, I mean, and we looked at this a lot, and the reality of it is, is that if they ever wanted to, the garage is in pretty good shape, and so economically, it doesn't make a lot of sense to tear it down. But it should be a lot better if it were moved back to the setback, which you could do at any point if it were too tight. The, you know, the scale these houses, and with having four kids in a house like this, the ability to get two cars in your garage is pretty challenged. And so typically, one car would park in the garage, and bikes and all the other things were in the other, so they end up backing out of the garage and not really being able to turn around. You can get a car in there, and, you know, we've gone over that and looked at the opportunities of cutting the corner and doing all that. So it's tight, and especially it's tight in terms of Lake Forest tight, you know, Evanston tight, I'm not sure it's that tight, you know, but we sort of drive the same cars. So, yeah, we've studied that and looked at that and think it's acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Bob? Peter and Todd, with the roof massing now on the south, have we factored an appropriate drainage coming off of the structure?
You know, basically, that, it drains to the south and will remain to drain to the south, so really, I don't think that's going to be much of an issue.
Got it, great, thank you.
Are you going to be expanding the basement also, or no?
No, we're not. This'll just be over crawl space.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. We will move on to public testimony on this matter. Any public testimony at all? That'll be short. No cross-examination? Any final questions?
I do notice we also received something in the.
One more correspondence here.
One more correspondence from another, from a neighbor in the area, and the correspondence appears to support the variance request.
We had two correspondents in support, and, okay. All righty. Well, why don't we move on to final comment and editorial comment and discussion? Maybe I'd just start it off. I mean, you've got a neighborhood with small lots, and this is a small structure to begin with. There's no change in the front elevation to this, to this house, and essentially, they're looking to, we're dealing with plat lines here, and they're looking to rebuild some new space in what appears to be the same footprint or a similar footprint to the east with a similar setback, that seven-and-a-half feet, so, you know. What do you think? Stuart, what do you think?
I think we move forward with the motion to approve.
Any other comments here?
I think he's saying that the comment section should be closed of the meeting.
I mean, I just kind of close it out there. It looks, you know, a house like this, people are looking to obtain some more living space to the best they can and under a hardship like this, and I think, I don't have a problem with it.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
All right. Well, then you would probably be the right person to make a motion, Stuart.
I'd like to move forward and recommend approval of the variance as submitted based on the findings stated by staff and the staff report dated earlier this month. The complete staff report and the materials included in the packet and the public testimony are incorporated as part of the findings. Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Congratulations. Good luck with your project. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for approval of an amendment to the special use permit for Ragdale, located at 1260 North Green Bay Road. The proposed amendment is requested to support the annual Ragdale Ring community event. Other modifications are proposed to align the special use permit, I assume that's the existing special use permit, with the current activities on the site. The owner is the city of Lake Forest, less see, property owner and operator is the Ragdale Foundation representative, sir, I'm going to butcher this, Jeffrey Muzen.
Muzen, right.
Muzen. Executive Director, and Jack Dance, Director of Property. Anybody intending to testify in this matter, if you'd stand, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Mr. Muzen.
Thank you. Well, you know, just a little bit of background, I've been the executive director at Ragdale now in just over a year and a half, and in that, I come from a very community-oriented presenting organization, and really wanted to bring some of that to Ragdale, recognizing that Ragdale is a unique arts organization in this community, bringing 156 artists from all over the world to this community. How do we create connections and do more? So we have spent a year and a half talking to our neighbors, other cultural organizations, educational institutions, to say, how do we balance the sanctity of the Ragdale residency and the quiet with occasional, and really just a handful of moments where the public can engage with the artistic community. So some of that is represented in the more minor updates to the special use permit, just bringing it up to current standards. But the largest one really is the Ragdale Ring project. And in poring over the history of Ragdale, back in 1912, Howard Van Dorenshaw created the original Ragdale Ring, which he designed the ring, the sets, the costumes, his wife wrote the plays, and they hosted events for 200 to 300 of their neighbors on summer's evenings out on the lawn. And we thought that would be a great opportunity to embrace the history of Ragdale, as well as our current residencies and the community. So that's the background of it. It really is the perfect sort of coming together of the three aspects of Ragdale's mission, which is all about the history and the campus and preserving it, as well as the residencies and the community. Last year was a pilot year for us. We learned a lot from it. It is, has grown in its second year to be a fully international competition. The way we handle it now is we request proposals. We receive proposals from as far away as Barcelona and Mexico City this year. We have selected a 2014 project and are looking for approval to continue this as a temporary artistic and architectural installation focused on a summer series of performances, just like the original Ragdale Ring. And I think that in working with Kathy and the city, we've come to a point where we feel good about how we should move this forward from what we learned last year, and we're looking for that approval.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to staff's report. Ms. Cerniak.
Thank you, Chairman Frankson. Just to review a little bit, what's proposed with the Ragdale Ring is, on an annual basis, Ragdale, as Jeff mentioned, holds a competition. And from that competition, a piece of artwork is selected that then gets erected in the backyard, in the rear yard of the Ragdale House. It's erected on a seasonal basis, and in the recommended conditions, it limits the time for which that structure can stay up. But then, as part of that, there are a series of performances that are open to the community that then occur throughout the summer months. So it's a physical structure, and then it's events. When Ragdale proposed this concept last year, we talked about it a little bit, and talked about it with the mayor, and talked about it with the city attorney, and they suggested that we do a pilot project. So you do have in your packet the resolution that the city council adopted last year, just to let us all try it out. From the city's perspective, we did not receive a single complaint about any of the events, about noise or traffic or people walking down the street. I don't believe that Ragdale received a single event. I know that they did communicate with their neighbors. The event really was very low-key, but it had the advantage of really increasing the awareness of Ragdale among residents in the community. Even today, there are residents who don't know that Ragdale even exists. So we brought this forward to really institutionalize the Ragdale Ring project so that it could occur on an annual basis with regulations. You did receive a letter that just came in earlier today from Lake Forest Open Lands. I think the main point of that letter, and in my discussions with John Centell, the executive president of Lake Forest Open Lands, the concern was that last year's structure, I think partly because of the weather and the frozen ground, did remain in place as a result of the early winter. And I think now that Ragdale has one of these events under its belt, that there can be planning to be sure that the structure gets removed so that in the winter, that those expansive views across Open Lands really are uninterrupted and you have views of the house. So the conditions tried to speak to that. There is one other modification to the language, has to do with the number of residents and the number of staff who can reside on the property. What's proposed is not an increase in the number, I believe it's 21, but simply more flexibility in how many of those are residents, how many of those are staff. So staff does recommend approval. The city, as owners of the property, certainly has had a long relationship with Ragdale. We work closely together. We communicate quite often. And the recent complete renovation of the Ragdale House that was completed by the Ragdale Foundation really was spectacular and is something that the city couldn't have done on its own. So it's really been a strong working relationship. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. What type of? I've not seen this, so the letter from the Open Lands mentions a current, quote, "wooden structured," quote, artwork. What, is this sculpture? Is this mixed media? What kind of artwork are we talking about here? Is it like a, I don't know.
And maybe, by the way, let me back up just for a second. We just received this letter tonight. A lot of us didn't get a chance to, I mean, we just read it, so I think we had to dig into this a little bit. What helped me, and I think this might be an example, is in the back of this packet that shows the, I think this is the ring, or an example of the ring, is this is the structure. But anyway, go ahead with your questions. That might give you a little bit of context.
Okay. Well, the structure that's on this, right above the Ragdale Ring lettering, that's not the, that's not a piece of artwork. That's just the, how shall I say it, like a shell or something for the, or am I wrong?
Or is that the ring?
Or is that the?
Yeah. We're confused. We have no information.
From what I can see, that what you have is a photo of the 2013 Ragdale Ring. The competition is inspired by the original Ragdale Ring by Howard Van Dorenshaw, but it is open to the architects and the designers' interpretation of an outdoor performance venue.
Is it a permanent structure?
It's specifically a temporary structure. That's the point of it, and actually inspires the design of it, because they can work with materials that don't need to be permanent.
So this is the structure that was left up all winter that's referred to in this?
That structure is still remaining. It will be coming down in a couple of weeks. We had challenges because of the long winter. It has long auger bits that go into the ground, and we couldn't remove it until the ground was thawed.
So is there another piece of artwork also that goes along with this, or is this it?
That is the structure. It's just meant to be a place to create, sort of create a sense of place.
So it's the, it's the structure and also the name of the event?
Right. The structure, we call the Ragdale Ring. We add the year to it for each new piece. But the location on the campus is open to the competition as well. So if the designers each year decide they would like to put it on a different part of the lawn, it could potentially move. It could potentially change in size. But we are very interested in, like all of you are, in finding the balance between, you know, it's a design-build residency. We want them to be creative. We want them to achieve new things in their career, just like every resident at Ragdale. But we also have to balance it with the quiet of the neighborhood.
Could I add just a little bit of cut? We're all wanting to jump right into this, which we will. Obviously, Ragdale is a, you know, jewel of the community, is a citizen. You look at this and go, wow, this is great. We need more of these sorts of things in the city. Our job tonight is obviously to make sure that the conditions and the effect of the special use permit, if amended, stays in place, and that, I think, Open Lands with their letter brought up some, some good issues that we're going to dig into. So I think we have a whole bunch of questions, and whoever would like to continue.
I was just, I'm sorry, I want to follow up on, so when is this, the structure that is displayed above the Ragdale Ring lettering? When is that erected, and what's, how long does it stay up?
Sure, the intent, moving forward, like I said, learning from what, from last year, the design team comes in as residents. They have a design-build residency in the month of May, and by the end of the month, that residency, it's usually three weeks, they will have created the structure. Then we have an opening event in mid-June, and that's a fundraising event for Ragdale. And then this summer, we have three performances planned in July, August, and September. We have a family day in October that is a sculpture walk, and then it would come down right after that.
Yes, sir.
So you have a definite date when the, when the structure will come down? In other words, this year, it won't stay up all winter long like it did last year?
No, in fact, the winning entry this year is a much more organic structure that could not reasonably stay up throughout the winter.
And Sam, if I could just point out, I think the proposed amended code requires that the structure be taken down by November 15th, if I'm reading this correctly. That's a hard date in what's being proposed to us tonight.
So it'll be a different structure this year?
It will be different. Every year will be a different team.
Every year it'll be different.
So each year, it's not this particular one, it's something else, and it's erected on some part of the land there.
The competition, and it is a juried competition, we have a team. This year, we had a team of 10 architects, landscape architects and sculptors, who selected the winning entry, and that will continue each year. But it is, like I said, intended to be temporary and change every year.
And it'll be one single structure or, or piece of art or whatever?
It will be one single location. You know, it is possible that a design team in 2015 could have two components to it, but it's not about making something large, it's about creating something that's appropriate for, you know, people to come for outdoor picnics and concerts.
So height and size, you know, is it restricted to, as far as how big it can be?
Or would you consider restrictions?
We could consider it. It becomes, you know, the more limitations you put on it, the less freedom the architects and designers have within the competition. What we've said so far is we need it to be in scale with the Ragdale House, it's such an important relationship. So we're really looking at that aspect of it, and they've worked very much in keeping with it.
So this could be really any, are there height restrictions on it, or no?
There are no height restrictions on it, other than, you know, what would be achievable. It's a relatively small budget, so it's a.
Are there, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't read the original special use because I sort of, it wasn't necessary, but are there guidelines on the materials that you can use, or any sorts of those?
We leave it, we leave it, it's into the teams. They have to have everything, you know, they work very closely with their engineers to make sure that it's feasible. It's a $15,000 award, so they are working with a $15,000 grant as their design-build residency, so.
Well, here's a side question that, perhaps for Kathy or Megan. Is a structure like this required to undergo inspection process by the, by the city, or would it be? Would. it be... Would there be a cap on like a height restriction for any like structures in the neighborhood? I mean...
The structure that's... That was put up for last year, we did do... We did issue a building permit, we did do inspections. We did consider it artwork. We did not put it through any extensive design review. However, certainly a condition could be added that requires that the artwork to be compatible with the Ragdale site, existing Ragdale House and Barn, and that would give us another review level. I think it... To put too many restrictions on it really runs a bit counter to the idea of creativity and artwork, but certainly the idea of something compatible with the open nature of the site, the historic character of the site, would be reasonable.
Compatible? How do you define compatible? I mean, you have an old, not an old, but a classic type home, and you could have a contemporary design, and someone, I'm not saying anyone here on the board, but someone might say, it's not... That's not compatible. I don't know. I don't know. Those terms are always difficult to define.
I think what we might be trying to avoid is the construction of an Eiffel Tower or something that's just grossly out of scale with the rest of the property.
Golden arches. What material is this from last year made on?
Wood. That is engineered lumber and aluminum. Now, I just, again, would say, this competition is very thoroughly vetted by a highly qualified team of architects and designers, and, you know, so it does go through that. That is something we are very concerned about. We don't want it to look like a theater when it's not being used as a performance space. So, you know, only had a temporary stage that can easily be removed. I mean, we're very conscious and trying to make sure that it's appropriate.
Are there acoustical features to what they have to design or no?
We put a list of sort of nice-to-have items and that they are optional within it. But, for example, last year, all of the lighting that was part of it was only brought in for the one evening and removed again.
Okay, so that begs another line of questioning. Would the... Is it possible there could be structures that would be lit all the time throughout the summer?
I don't... I don't... We do not plan... It's hard to say what will it be like 10 years from now, but we don't want it to be this beacon that sits in the back lawn for our residents either. The current structure for 2014 does have a minimal amount of tiny little LED lights that are used for performances. I don't see it as being something that we would leave on all of the time. I mean, it wouldn't make sense. We're not a public venue outside of those evenings, so.
Can you see this from Green Bay Road?
Yes.
You can? Can you see it now?
Yes.
Since it's still up? You can see it?
I was there today.
I haven't looked.
Yesterday.
It's changing as the leaves come back.
I suggest that we do that.
How high is this off the ground? What's the highest point, do you know?
I believe it's 22 feet.
22 feet?
Probably 25 feet.
Just follow along those lines. What about sound, amplified sound? Is amplified sound used during these performances?
We had a small amount of sound brought in just for the performances, but we did not have any complaints, and these are early evening performances. You know, they're done by 10 o'clock at the latest. And this year in particular, we're skewing to a very family-oriented, you know, it's guitar music, it's a couple of storytelling, it's not a rock concert.
Acoustic guitar music.
Right.
Okay. Are there any city ordinances that govern the level of amplified sound in these situations?
Yes, there's a standard noise ordinance that does not allow sound after certain hours. You do have in the recommended conditions a specified time period at which the events would end.
Right.
If this was approved, you know, on an annual basis, is there a process? Let's say something happened and it got out of control or was creating a problem. Is there a process, then you can step in, and... Or is it difficult to do that?
Certainly. You have conditions of approval, and based on your discussion, you may want to add some conditions that speak to lights or that speak to the scale of the structure, not specifically limiting it, but requiring staff review as part of the permitting. And certainly, if there was an event and we received complaints, we would reopen the special use permit. Any neighbor could request that it come back before the zoning board of appeals and be reviewed.
So it would come back here, and then if there were issues that developed, and then we could assess it?
Correct. Yes. If there was any question about whether they were conforming with the conditions or if the event appeared to not be what's being described, if it turned into a rock concert, for instance.
Well, you know, that begs the next question, I guess, which is, can you tell us what the five performances are being planned for this summer? Can you talk about what they are, what kind of... They plays, are they music, are they... What are they?
Sure. We're still finalizing the series, and it's only three performances. The first one is sort of a world music acoustic evening, and these are curated by top performers from Chicago and beyond. The second one is a storyteller's evening, so there's really no... Other than a microphone, there's really no loud amplified component. And the third one is a combination of an improv and dance performance.
Are these... These are one-day events, these?
It's just in the evening.
Okay.
And I did... You should have a copy of our calendar that I'll listen to.
I would just point out that the language in, would you call it, is it in the special use permit, it says no more than five outdoor project events shall be undertaken. It doesn't indicate whether they could be three-day events or five-day events, or whether they're confined to a one-day event. And I think perhaps the board should...
That's probably the intent, but if that, I mean...
I think we should specify.
If we need a little bit more definition there, that's fine. I mean, I don't think it's the intent that you would have a Lollapalooza for like three days of each of those events.
So your intent... So you could live with it's a one-day?
Sure, of course.
Fence or one day?
Of course. Again, because it's different every single year, flexibility is a nice thing to have, but at this point, I would see no reason why that would be a problem.
Well, why don't we ask that question? I'm just curious. Have you ever had an event where it was like a weekend two-day event, or did you ever anticipate, you know, and, you know?
We have an event that we currently do. It's not Ragdale Ring related, but our Novel Affair fundraiser in the fall is a two-day event. And actually, this year, it may become a three-day event. It doesn't happen on the Ragdale campus, though, so.
Yeah. The... How about setup time for the events? It may be a one-day event, but is it a several-day setup timeframe or what?
For a particular performance, it is possible that musicians might need to come in a week before to do a sound check or something like that. You know, last year, that did happen. They came in for an hour on an afternoon, and they did a sound check, and it was pretty minimal.
There's also mention of food and alcohol in the special use language. Have you served alcohol before in events?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And does that require permitting from the city?
Yes. For institutions like Ragdale, there are special types of liquor licenses that allow liquor to be served or alcohol to be served at specific events.
Can you talk about who's on the approval committee for the design of the structure and how that transpires, and whether or not you've ever considered putting somebody from the community on that approval committee, just to sort of get buy-in from everybody? I suspect if you had 100 people in here, and you said, who thinks they'll be bothered by what we might build there, half of them might raise their hands, but if you, you know, if you had somebody on the committee from the community, that might help.
Sure.
Now or in the future to sort of alleviate those concerns?
We would certainly be open to it. And another suggestion I was thinking is that when our jury... If that didn't happen, when our jury has made their selection, we could immediately take it past representatives from the city, because there is always a phase where we need to go back to the designers and work with them to tweak the design to make sure that it's appropriate. So it would be easy to incorporate another step in there. But our jury this past year was made up of people like Walker Johnson, architect in the city, a representative from David Woodhouse's firm, Phil Rossborough, Zurich Esposito, the vice president of AIA. You know, it was... It's a very accomplished group, and that jury will change each year as well.
Can you tell us about, let's say, the world music event? About how many people do you anticipate would be present at that event?
I mean, best guest... We... Last year, we ranged from, I would say, 60 people to 120, which on the lawn behind the Ragdale House is not that many. We could easily accommodate more. But it was a nice, very casual, people with blankets and lawn chairs, and a really enjoyable evening.
So, you know, it... This really has the makings, I think. I mean, it's something that I want to support myself, but I think Open Lands brought up a very good group of issues here. Maybe we could just kind of take these. You know, the timeframe, I mean, I'm just... I don't know if you have the benefit of this letter.
I do.
But the... In the back, the timeframe issue, I think they brought up a very good point, that the current structure has remained on site throughout this past winter. Probably don't want that to happen again. There probably ought to be a cap and cusp when it goes up and when it comes down. I don't know that I agree on the July 1st through the October 30th. I think what staff crafted in their language, you know, I think it's May through October, I think that was the intent. That seems reasonable to me. Those are kind of the summer months. And there's also a... Well, that's for the events, but then there's also the structure's got to come down by November 15th. That seems reasonable to me.
Right. I just, to nitpick a little bit, maybe construction could start effective May 1st. Because again, it sounds like this was... Took a while to build this thing.
Well, look at May 1st. It's... There's probably no outdoor parties on May 1st in Lake Forest, but...
Or some start date for, you know, the start of construction of the...
Right. The timeframe that we have, that we're working with now, is really sort of ideal. That May is the time to construct it.
Yeah.
We can't really hold a public fundraising event outside before mid-June, and we can't really do anything outside after October. So there's no real reason for us to keep it up. And in my conversations with neighbors and Open Lands, it really is when the leaves fall that the structure becomes more visible, and we certainly want to be considerate of that.
So maybe to add the definition here, construction no earlier than May 1st, everything down by November 15th, and the events are obviously done by the end of October. I think that's what's written here, and that probably is acceptable.
Right. We have a couple of weeks to remove it.
And we can come back to these if people have other comments, but location of artwork, I mean, this was kind of a, just a general comment by the Open Lands. I wouldn't know how to... I wouldn't know how to address that.
Well, you know what? I have an idea, and that is, I guess my first question would be, maybe you guys know this, have there been any complaints of people driving by on Green Bay calling and saying, what is that? Why is that? I don't know if there have been or not. I'd be curious if there have been.
We did not receive any complaints during the summer when the events were going on and have not received any complaints. We did mail direct notice to neighbors all in this area up and down Green Bay Road, and we've received no complaints at all.
I wonder if there's a way to, based on the topography of the site, I don't know what it is, but I know it slopes and it kind of... If there's a way to meld a height restriction on the artwork with where it sits on the site so that maybe it wasn't even visible from Green Bay at all. So you could say maximum height based on whether it goes in the position it was last year. Maybe it moves somewhere else on the site that's blocked by a berm or a slope or something like that, so that you really couldn't even see it from Green Bay. I don't know if it's possible to do that. I don't know if that's too restrictive, but...
You know, Rich, I want to... I'd offer something that I think Lloyd was alluding to earlier, that we all ought to be driving by these sites. And I actually drove by on Sunday. I mean, I know where Ragdale is, but I just drove by for the heck of it, and for whatever reason, I didn't notice the structure. I might have been going like this, but I mean it...
It's not that easy to see. It is visible from Green Bay, but that's... That isn't even what I think Open Lands' concern is. I think their concern is the vista from Shaw Prairie.
You know, I understand that, yeah. Well, there's, you know, there's from the east and then there's from the west, so.
Right.
Okay. Because I haven't seen it, so I'm just asking the question on that.
Kathy, are there setbacks on this property? I mean, would it be simple, say, artwork has to be in setbacks?
This property is Zondar IV, so the side yard setbacks are 20 feet from the property line, the side yard. So those would apply, and the location of the artwork that's there right now does comply with that.
Right. Maybe it's that simple.
I think it is.
On location.
Yeah. You were going to say something.
Yeah, I think. One thing we were talking, you're talking about your structure this year has lighting that's LED lights, if I'm not mistaken. Now, are these lights only on during performances or are they on at all times?
They are, as it's proposed right now, and it may change when it's actually installed, it's only during performances, and it's only... The lights are only visible from... It faces... The structure faces the house, the Ragdale House, and so you could see it if you were in the house or behind the house, but you would not be able to see from the prairie.
Okay. So that's actually...
I think that's a... Should be a restriction then, that it can only be... It should not be able to be seen from the road.
Well, that's a pretty good segue here with the third point of Open Lands' letter. There are two parts to this. There's kind of a reasonableness of the artwork color and scale. I think that we said earlier, compatible with the Ragdale site. I mean, that's a kind of a catch-all. But then at the end, there's a request that any lighting on the artwork be shut off by 9:00 PM, and in staff's memo or in the altered language, it has a... Event must be completed, including any cleanup or tear-down, no later than 10:30. I think by saying 9:00 PM, you know, I mean, that's... Yeah, I think that's too restrictive.
Well, it isn't.
What time is our vignette?
10:30.
10:30.
It is dark in October.
Yeah. I mean, I could certainly live at the 10:30. I think the way it's crafted is for no more than five events a year.
Well, yeah, if you have an event, you're not going to be...
At least at nine o'clock. This is as long as it isn't like the lights at a baseball stadium, you know?
Do you have any sort of rendering or drawing of what you're proposing to put there this year that you could show us, just as an example?
I don't have it with me. It is on our website. I don't know if we have the ability to pull it up.
Not tonight.
No. And Kathy has reviewed them as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Were you going, Mr. Chairman, going through the...
Yeah, but continue on.
Well, I have one question on a different subject. It's just the off-site parking. Where do you do it now? Where do you anticipate doing it for these events? And how would that all be controlled?
We coordinate with the city to find out what is the best location based on the day and time of the event. And we typically shuttle from that location. We do some parking at Ragdale, and the rest is off-site.
But it's not on side streets?
No. No, it's typically in a city lot that's underutilized in the evening.
I'm just wondering if that should be addressed in the language here, because off-site just means off-site.
Why don't we do this? Noted. Why don't we wrap up all of our questions, and then we'll come on back and see what we can live with and, you know? I've got a dumb question. It occurs to me on my planet... Time of the Plan Commission, we had similar matters come up before us for like a special use permit. I'm curious as to why this is here as opposed to the Plan Commission.
The zoning board hears amendments to existing special use permits. If Ragdale hadn't existed and they were coming for a brand-new special use permit, that If Ragdale hadn't existed and they were coming for a brand new special use permit, that would go to the plan commission.
Got it.
The college has come before you for some special use permits. The college is already permitted by a special use permit, so it's kind of like adding pieces.
Got it, thank you, thank you. What other questions do we have?
Is this something that could be put in there that is renewed each year or something? That there's another, you know, or there's some sort of a review thing? I mean, I think it's a great project and should continue, but you never know and is that possible?
The way special use permits work is they're normally approved with a series of conditions. If those conditions are not followed or if the event or the use is something significantly different than what was represented, then those would come back before you. But the idea of a special use is really to put something in place so that the user, the neighbors, the city has a certain understanding and most of the time they move forward without any problem.
I guess what I'm getting at is if this turned out, you know, if it was approved as, you know, it's written, and some of those things turned out to be a big problem with the community, then the process is there, even if they were following the guidelines, but all of a sudden, whatever it is, the structure was hideous or something and people were up in arms, even though it followed the guideline, then that could be addressed and it would come back and be reviewed and maybe change the guidelines.
Yes, and the first thing we would do if there was a particular event that caused a problem, we would immediately be talking with staff at Ragdale and, and talking that through and making changes, identifying the problem. If it couldn't be resolved, yes, it would be brought back before you. And if neighbors felt that this wasn't being followed or the events were not as represented, they could also make the request to come before you. But we would, again, we would be in constant contact and these are the kind of events that we have in the community that, they're always a little different each year, not unlike the Fourth of July celebration. We're always modifying that and responding. This certainly is much smaller in scale than that, but I would expect that we're going to be talking together a lot and certainly we would come back before you if, if there was some unanticipated situation.
So just like tonight, we're being asked to expand this special use permit a bit. If, if there was a problem, there would be a mechanism for the city to come back and make it more restrictive. Probably doesn't happen that often, but it could happen, I suppose.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Kathy, has there been a historic occurrence where an issue has come up in the past since the competition has been held? Have there been any issues or concerns that have come up?
Last year was the first year.
Got it.
Again, it was approved by resolution. The, the city heard, received no complaints or concerns at all.
Thank you. So there was a level of best practice and intent for good purpose in terms of the permit as it was used last year? I think we can use that as a marker in terms of patterns of behavior going forward.
You're not going to ask about the drainage?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Any other questions? And we'll be circling back, but okay. We've got to get the public testimony, that's
That's right.
All right. Okay, thank you. So now we will move to public testimony on this matter, not to exceed five minutes per speaker. All righty. No cross-examination. Any final questions? I mean, I want to, we want to have some discussion about this, but any final questions, you know?
Nope.
So let's, let's just talk very openly about this. I, you know, I want to support this. I'm not quite as picky, I think, as, as maybe some other members of the board might be, but that, we're here to make sure that the special, the conditions of the special use permit remain intact. I think the, I think the Open Lands brought up some very good issues that are kind of encapsulated in here, but maybe need to be reinforced a bit more. So why don't we take a look? I think the next step is to kind of take a look at what's being proposed and to talk about what we think needs to be changed, beefed up, you know? Does anybody have a problem with the 21 persons? I mean, I, I don't really have a problem with that, so it looks like we're, we're kind of in this section here.
Would you like a summary of what I think staff has heard as far as your concerns?
Sure, please. Please do.
That in addition to the conditions presented, the following clarifications or additional conditions should be added. That any lighting on the, on the structure should be limited to use the evening on performances only and should not be visible from the Green Bay Road streetscape. That the five events shall each be limited to a single, single day for the performance, acknowledging that there may be some setup time, some limited setup time needed prior to the day of performance. That staff shall review the structure, the artwork approved by the jury to assure that in general, the scale is appropriate for the site and the surrounding residential neighborhood and that the structure is generally compatible with the Ragdale site and existing structures. And then finally, clarification that the off-site parking shall be in existing surf, in existing lots and no parking for the events shall be permitted on residential streets.
Good.
Anything else? Yeah, let me go back, actually, on the lighting not visible for the Green Bay Road.
I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a couple of, yeah.
For the one night, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, that's not.
I made that suggestion and I was saying when, not when the performances were on, but when the performances were not going on, you were mentioning that the lighting would be on even though performances aren't going on.
No, he said the opposite.
You said the opposite?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'm not worried about that for, for the performances.
I would just consider one more restriction, being on the location of the artwork. I think it's your intent, is it not, that the artwork generally be behind Ragdale, right? Behind the home? It's not going to be in the front yard?
No, it's, it's the best location.
Okay, so, and then, you know, so if it's behind the house and within the setbacks?
Yeah.
I think that's fine, but I think it should be specified.
I think that's the intent, isn't it? Yeah, we wouldn't want that in the front yard.
No.
Right.
The only other location that might be a little problematic, there is a big side yard to the south.
Right.
Is there any expectation that you would locate there? I don't, we don't want to risk
I doubt it. The benefit to behind the house is the view of the sunset over the curb.
Beautiful.
Only other location that would be possible would be in our garden, which is, again, it's even more secluded.
Is the garden behind or to the west of the rear of the house? It's, it's kind of northwest, right? Yeah, right. So, just so long as it's behind the house and
I think that's the intent.
Behind the line of the house.
Yeah, we're happy to
And inside the setbacks.
Okay. So I don't know if you, did you catch all those conditions? What other comments?
By the way, I would just like to echo the chairman in that I think, I certainly want to support your effort to do this and I suspect the rest of the board members do too, so.
Yeah, I think the whole community, I mean, I don't think, there's no, nobody's written any complaint or negative comments about this. Yep, they have not. So we've kind of wrapped this up. I think we're ready for a motion which has a chunk of it sitting over on Kathy's computer, but whoever would like to take a crack at the motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of an amended special use permit for the Ragdale project to authorize this annual project known as the Ragdale Ring project on a seasonal basis through the, through the time periods that have been articulated by staff and in our reports and other minor amendments as detailed in the report and also as set forth here before the board and recorded by staff.
Is there a second?
A second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, congratulations and have a great season.
Thank you.
We'll hope to see you there. Now is the time, the opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda. All right. Now we are moving on to additional information from staff and a few wrap-up items that it's going to be very hard for me to get through. I, well, it is. Yes, we have two board members, you're coming back next month, but two board members. Board member Sicarelli and board member Dixon are retiring, not literally. Stu, I don't know what I'm going to do without you at the left with your, your weekly, your monthly drainage question. That's, it's been a critical staple of this board. And Sam, thank you for being there for me. Any other board members would like to offer their thanks and congratulations? There'll be longer ones next month, but
Well, I'm certainly going to miss both of you. It's been a pleasure serving with you.
Thanks.
And then finally, tonight is the last ZBA meeting that Megan Newman will be with us as she is off to her new job as a city planner in Seattle, Washington. Thank you so much, Megan, for the fantastic job you have done. You have made our jobs very easy and very smooth. And would the board like to make editorial comments on that matter? I mean, we only have an hour. Yeah.
Well, I would certainly echo the fact that it makes the, our meeting smooth because everything is well-prepared. It's, you know, it's right there in front of us and it's really usually pretty easy to figure out where we're going with it, so we appreciate that.
And I think the entire board realizes and perceives how conscientious you've been in, in your duties and, and we appreciate it.
Appreciate everything you've done, Megan. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
You have been a fantastic professional and it's Lake Forest's loss, but Seattle's gain, so congratulations on your, on your new horizons, so. With that, is there any other comment from the board?
Let's take us out of here.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.